And I don't know how you did this.
Good evening. Welcome back to the second night of the budget workshops. And at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to County Manager Brian Alligut.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So as we have traditionally done, we'll start essentially on the Table of Contents page and work our way down the left side. We'll do the revenues, we'll go through the summaries, we'll do general government, human services, community services, and our hope is to get through education tonight. So if we're able to do that, then on Tuesday, next Tuesday, we'll start with public safety. We'll work through public safety, do the special revenues, enterprise funds, the internal service funds, and the capital projects on Tuesday. Then next Thursday, week from tonight, we'll do the expansion projects, the outside agencies and expansions. And then your awful week, essentially, we come back in June, on June the 3rd. So if you're actually on page one on the proposed budget schedule, we'll come back in for the regular June 3rd meeting, and you'll have your budget public hearing. So you'll receive comments from the public at your regular meeting on the 3rd. Then with the shift in dates, you'll have one more meeting, one more budget workshop. That'll be the next night on the 4th for you to finalize the budget as you see fit. And then we have a special call meeting on the 10th, June the 10th, that next Monday, for the board to consider adopting the budget. Now, again, you don't have to adopt it that night, but you really need to get it adopted before June 30th. So, but that's essentially how the schedule lays out. If anybody has any questions about that?
It's on page one.
So anybody, everybody good? So there was, there was one, there was one little, one little change there. If you see on page, we're at 61024, it says special call meeting, public hearing, and budget adoption. So scratch the public hearing, the public hearing is actually going to be on the regular meeting on June the 3rd at your regular meeting. That way, you're not doing both on the same night. You're not public hearing and adoption, potential adoption. So that gets you through the budget schedule. Don't know that there's, if you have any questions about the fund structure, starting on page three, that just talks about the different funds. Obviously, that's more of an educational piece for folks who are understanding the budget, where it defines the general funds, special revenue funds, capital funds, enterprise funds, internal service funds. So folks understand, we have the basis of budgeting, which is your document on how you do things with expenditures, revenues, how you amend the budget ordinance. And then on page seven, of course, it's your financial policies that were adopted by the board on how you handle your unassigned fund balance, investment policies, who's responsible for what, ethics and conflicts of interest, the statutory authorizations that are all tied into that. Talks about internal controls, and then our debt management policy that you have. And that's directly where you talk about your fund balance and how you manage that. So it's pretty much the same thing you've had in your book for several years now. Moving on to page 13, which is the summary of authorized positions. These are the number of positions that we're recommending in the 2425 budget. It's 392. It's the same amount that we had this year, so there are no additions. There are no additions in the recommended budget. There are some service expansions that are asking for additional positions, but there are no additional positions in the recommended budget. So you'll see the changes over the years. We go back to fiscal year 1920, so you can see the trend. The big change you'll see there was this year, of course, when you pulled the SROs back under the sheriff's office. That's why it went from 96 to 109, but we maintained the 109. And then you added some positions in social services due to the Medicaid piece, and tax assessor dropped a position. So we're at 392, and those are the positions that we're recommending under the, under the recommended continuation budget. And, so any questions?
Brian, from, from time to time, we talk about the full-time people that we pay, full-time people. We pay in the, like in the school system and the community college, we pay all of the salaries.
There are some that are funded locally.
Would it be possible just, just to get those current numbers for both?
Sure.
Both at the college as well as the school system, where it's 100%?
I want to, I want to think, I want to say, I have to go back and look through my stuff, but I think they may have already been sent over by the school system, but I will check on those locally funded positions.
Thank you.
One other thing, can you, for us at some future meeting, bring back a little bit of the history, maybe five years back, of the tax assessed value total for the county?
Sure. I think we'll, I think we can show, yep, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
We'll put your graph.
I think you showed this year and last year.
Mm-hmm.
If we can go back and get some history then. It's a pretty impressive run.
Yes, sir. We'll go back to the last revow.
Okay.
Unless Randy's got a question, I think that pretty well wraps that up.
Okay. All right. So the next page, on page 15, is where we show you the proposed paying classification plan. In that, you will see the grades, the hiring rates, the probation, complete, midpoint, maximum, the different positions that are in each of those grades, whether they are fair labor standard act exempt or non-exempt positions, and whether we consider them safety sensitive positions, and of course, what department they're in. If they are considered a safety sensitive position, then that means they're subject to random drug testing. And there's some pretty tight restrictions, not, you can't just willy-nilly say everybody's subject to, or everybody's in a safety sensitive position, because that's the difference in private sector and government sec, government employees. The spring court's ruled pretty clearly on that. There have to be specific things that make you a sense, safety sensitive position before you can be randomed. In private sector, you can random anybody you want. So, there are a couple of changes to the paying classification plan due to some changes that have occurred or are going to occur by the Department of Labor in raising the dollar amount, the annual dollar amount for employees where they're considered exempt or non-exempt. There's a, there's, there's usually a test that you do based upon responsibilities and those kind of things. But on July 1, they'll update, according to this, is the agency will update standard salary levels using the existing methodology developed under the Trump administration. The salary level at which salary employees will be exempt from overtime will rise at that point from 674 per week to 844 per week, which is the equivalent of $43,888 per year. So they're taking that bottom basement and saying, you got anybody below that, anybody below that level is mandatory non-exempt. You cannot classify anybody below that level as exempt. And then there's another change that occurs January 1 of the upcoming year, and we've got a couple of things we need to look at on that one, just to make sure we're clear. But that's the, that's the recommendation on those. So, anybody has any questions?
We're good?
Yep. All right. So that takes us into page 21, in the general fund summary of revenues. Of course, and y'all know how this is laid out, we have the, everything rolls up to the top here, and then we can drill down into it as we go further back. So property taxes is the first one, and you'll see that we have the formula listed. So the net taxable value, and of course, everybody, just to remind folks who may not understand or may not remember it, I know y'all do, but for folks that are listening. So tax levy equals tax value times tax rate. So as the valuation goes up in growth, so when we have growth in the county, when there are new structures that are built, when there's new machinery that's put in place, the value goes up. So that allows for some growth in revenue for the county. You know, when you talk about revaluation, when we go out and revalue properties, that's the big thing where we want everybody to understand that that formula still applies. So, you know, you, some of our neighbors are going through revaluation, and the value, if it goes up tremendously, then folks get a little excited, but obviously, the board has the opportunity to adjust that tax rate down to equal out. Value times rate equals levy. So, but for what we have this year, what we're recommending this year, the, the net taxable value for 2425 is, if you look on page 21, about middle way there, is 6.5 billion, billion with a B, 6.5 billion dollars. And with our tax rate of 62 and a half cent, we assume a collection rate of 98.61. So that is from our last year's audited statement, where the auditors came in, the CPAs did our audited books for us. Our collection rate at that time, based upon it, was 98.61. The local government, local government budget fiscal control act allows us to use that number. You can't assume 100% collection, but you're allowed to go back and use what your prior year audited collection number was. So our prior year audited collection number for real property was 98.61. So you'll see that with that, we also use 100%, we assume a collection rate of 100% for motor vehicles. The reason we do that is through the new tax and tag program the state put in place many years ago, where you can't get your taxes, you can't get your tags renewed without paying your, your taxes. You have to pay your registration, your taxes, and then you get your, your registration redone. So it used not to be that way, and people played a lot of games with it, but that got changed several years ago, and it's been, been a great thing, kind of keeps everybody honest. So we're able to assume that 100%. So you'll see in the, in the asterisks further down, real and personal is 5.894 billion. You multiply that times the 62 and a half, and then the collection rate of 98.61 gives us about 36 million. And then registered vehicle, registered motor vehicles at $682 million, and the same rate, same tax rate is at 100% is 42, 4.2 million. So total, total expected revenues for current year out of that would be $40,594,588. We have prior year collections down at the bottom, 43, 4,033,400, where we are still picking up taxes from prior years. We go all the way for 10 years collecting that, and there's a stat, there's a statute that doesn't allow us to go after, after that, after 10 years. And then there's penalties and interest in the amount of 241,100 that we're estimating we'll collect. So a total of $41,269,080 is what we are looking at on, that rolls up to that top line number under property taxes. And you can also look in your book, Anita always puts this in your book, it's the big sheet, and that's your, that's your rolled up revenue. So you can see, we built in a 2% growth factor in our, in our tax, in our anticipated tax return, based upon what we think's going to be there. And of course, you know, they are still, business personal property's still coming in, there's still, there's still appeals on business personal property. So there could be some swings, and this is one of those where we, we make an educated guess at what we think's going to be there, based upon our conversations with the tax assessor, where he sees things going, and, and where we think we're going to be. So that's our estimate, and what we think we'll do. We try to be conservative on that, to make sure we're not doing something that's unrealistic and get ourselves in trouble later. So any questions on prop, on the property tax discussion?
Everybody's good?
Okay. So I take you to page 22. This is the sales, sales and other tax. These are what we talk about, the different articles, Article 39, Article 40, Article 42, and Article 44, the whole harmless. You'll see those numbers. We show you the actual from 22, 23, the original, which was last year's budget, what got amended throughout the year, and then what the recommended is. So we're showing that total slightly down at the bottom, and you can see we're slightly up on the Article 39, we're down on Article 40, we're down a little bit on Article 42, we're a little bit up on Article 44. And then you get into the beer and wine licenses, the excise tax, excise tax that the registered deeds collects, and of course, that's based on property transfers. And then vehicle, rental vehicle receipts, you'll see where we are on that, we hover right around 30, 35. So there's a piece of that in the explanation under our sales tax, where there are certain portions of this, like Article 39 is, can be used entirely for general fund operations, Article 40, which is commonly called the school's half cent tax, has to go for school, there's 30% mandatory transfer for revenues for schools for restricted capital. And then Article 42, which they commonly call the school's additional half cent, that's part of, 60% of those are required. So you'll remember when our sales tax went out the roof, and each year, we estimate how much money we are going to have to transfer to the school system. And we use the majority of these funds to pay debt service on, on our school bonds. And so when those numbers accelerated and just went wild, that, the additional mandatory funding that had to go to the school systems was bumped up. So it all depends upon what sales tax comes in. We believe that sales tax now has plateaued for us, and we're hoping that it kind of stays where it is. It may, it may turn down a little bit for us, but we tried to be, we've tried to conservatively estimate that. You'll see we're down a little bit, we've, we've, we've come, we've come off about $300,000 on that from our original of 15 million to about 14.7. So really, it all depends upon how the economy continues to run, what inflation does. Got an article from the chairman yesterday, Wall Street Journal, where they just released the, the latest in inflation numbers come down a little bit more. So, so there's, there seems to be, you know, it's a double-edged sword for us. That, that turned out, that downturn in inflation helps. The changing, with it being up, the interest rates are better for us, you know, we're, we're doing very well with our interest rates. We anticipate those turning down. Don't know how long it's going to be for those to turn down, but we can talk about those as we get into, we get into the interest earnings. But those are your sales and other taxes that are grouped together. And of course, that rolls up on page 21 to the 14.7 million. Any questions on sales and other use taxes?
On the sales tax, Brian, is, is this our net amount that comes to the county?
Yes. There's a portion of that that goes to the municipalities.
But this is net to the county?
Yep. Yes, sir. Otherwise, we would, we'd be off in the amount. We'd, we'd be showing too much. So intergovernmental revenues, these are ones that come from state or federal sources. Some of those are grant-funded for, you know, things like emergency management, soil and water, where different public safeties that we grant, grant funds from. So you'll see a beer and wine tax, that's up, you know, we've traditionally been fairly strong in our beer and wine tax. Being the disaster payments, thank goodness, we haven't had any of those, we're not projecting any of those. As upon what you want to hear, this is unfortunately, knock on wood, liable to be an active hurricane season, but hopefully, we'll, we'll do well again. ABC tax distributions is the fund you receive from the ABC Commission for their sales. DWI Fine State Roads Act, state and federal grants, those are listed out, and if you want to see the detail on those in the revenue section, your revenue spreadsheet breaks those down. Court costs, we receive a certain portion of court costs for facilities. We do receive lottery proceeds, we use those for our, to pay for our debt service as well in schools. We don't have the EMS Medicaid cost reimbursement anymore. That was a program that was in place where at the end of the year, we would put all our stuff together, and they would reimburse us. We still have to put all that together, but they adjust the payment rates now, so we get a higher payment rate to cover that. And then the EMS general fund tax revenues, that's where, out of the taxes that are levied for EMS, there's a portion of that that comes back into the general fund, because we're providing that service in certain areas. So those are your restricted intergovernmental revenues. Happy to answer any questions you may have about those.
So we've got, what, three taxing districts on the EMS that we're collecting out of?
So there, there are more than three EMS taxing districts.
Well, but the county isn't running. More than three?
No, 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 I thought you meant overall.
No, just the county.
Correct. I think that's right.
So out of those that we're, we're responsible for right now, we're going to get $950,000?
Correct.
Okay.
So on page 23, your license and fees and other general fund revenues. This runs the gamut of animal service fees, building fees, cable franchise, we even, we put in donations and contributions, because we, we receive those occasionally. Elections, we don't have that reimbursement cost, because next year is not a, not a municipal election. You see EMS rescue fees, that's where the fees come in for, for EMS billing, health fees, all the way down through miscellaneous, there are rents that we have, if we sell any fixed assets. This is the big one here, where you'll see, we originally had 288, 2.8 million in last year's original budget, and we go to 3.1. The, the whole of that essentially is in the SRO grant. You'll see that we're showing that as zero in prior years. That's because the SRO grant did not come to us and went to the school system, because the SROs were over there under the allied contract. Now that the SROs are under the sheriff's office, those grant proceeds, that, that SRO grant funding will flow to the county to help pay for those costs. So that's the, that's the whole of that difference essentially. I mean, if you look at the numbers, it's even, it's down overall. If you take that out, our, the revenue side's down on it. So again, that rolls up as well under, under page 21, under license fees and other revenues. Any questions? So page one? Yes, sir.
We're good.
Okay. So on page 24, investment earnings and transfers in. These are the investment earnings, we're projecting $1.8 million in investment earnings. If you look on your spreadsheet, just for giggles, you'll see that we are estimating this year, we're projecting $3.1 million. That's on the next to the last page for investment earnings. We're projecting about $3.1 million in interest earnings. That's come a long, long way from where we were when, when interest rates were like 2%, 1%, half percent. So again, good and bad, but we projected this at 1.8, because we believe, we're, we're going to believe the Fed and what they tell us, and that they're going to make some rate cuts as they get a hold of inflation. There's still some, they're still working on some of that, but they, but they, what we're hearing, what, what they're signaling is that they're going to make some rate cuts. They initially said they were going to try to get four cuts in before the end of the year. Don't think that's going to happen, and they're signaling they're not, that's probably not going to happen. But we're looking at a 12-month period, so we want to look at that entire thing, and as well, not only on rate cuts that we're anticipating, which would impact our, our interest earnings, but we're also, you got to remember, we're taking, in this upcoming budget year, we'll be pulling four and a half million dollars out of that investment or pot, because you're going to move that money in, in the match for the, for the school. You got a million the first year, four and a half, and then four and a half. So as we pull those funds out of our fund balance, they won't, they won't be in fund balance, they'll be moved, at the end of the fiscal year, Anita's going to move those, that 10 million is going to move over into a restricted fund. That doesn't mean it's not earning interest, but as we pay that money out in the next year, then we will see that, that balance in the overall investment category go down. So we anticipate not getting as much investment, not getting as much interest. So we're saying about 1.8. Everybody good there? So then we're into appropriated fund balance on page 25. So again, we talked about, we're recommending $700,000 as the appropriation of fund balance this year. That $700,000 is one-time money, we consider that one-time money expenditures, it's the $500,000 that this board agreed to in this fiscal year for the trades building project at the community college. That $500,000 is anticipated to be matched up against another $500,000 from, from school, from state bond funding for community colleges to put in a trades building. So that's 500 of the 700, and then the additional 200,000 is the transfer that we make from the general fund to the workers' compensation revenue fund. That is our, our internal service fund, where we have set, we set funds aside, the board agreed that based on our workers' comp exposure, it was, it made sense for us to take a high deductible on our workers' comp, to drive our premium down, and then move money over into a, a fund as a, as a, as a hedge against any large expenditures we may have. That's been successful for us, and then we have, the, the policy, or the, the policy was to move $200,000 over there each time till we got to a point where we were about one and a half or two million dollars in that fund as a, as a stopgap measure in case we had a large, in case we had to pay that large deductible, and then we would be able to cover it. But it's been beneficial, it's the same thing you did last meeting, when we talked about upping our deductibles on our property, property and liability, so that we could help drive those premiums down, because they have become excessive just with the world economy and, in reinsurance. So that's where the 700 is. Everybody wants, everybody remembers the 8% unassigned fund balance, that everybody wants, everybody says, oh, you got way too much, you got way over 8%. And yes, the local government commission does say, they write you ugly letters if you have less than 8% fund balance, and they should write you ugly letters if you have less than 8% fund balance, because 8% fund balance is 1/12. That's one month of reserves for a budget that runs 12 months. So, so they should be writing you ugly letters. This board has a, has a policy that your fund balance target would be 35%. The reason you do that is enumerated up, up front in the top up here, to provide sufficient cash flow for daily financial needs. The reason we do that, the reason you have that policy in place, is that we don't start collecting revenue, tax revenue, our largest source, property tax revenue, our largest source by, by far, we don't start really collecting that until November, December, and January of the next year. But we start expenditures July 1. So we have several months in there where we don't have any revenue coming in, any of our large tax revenue coming in to offset that. So you got to have some cushion to be able to pay for that. So that's number one, to have sufficient cash flow. Number two is to secure and maintain investment-grade bond ratings. So if we have to go out and borrow money, the, the lending institutions look at our, how capitalized we are, how much money we have in the bank, and where we are. So that helps us. And number three, offset significant economic downturns or revenue shortfall. So you've got some, you've got some, some float in the bank, so that if something bad happens, that we don't anticipate, you're able to sustain that until you get into the next year. And then provide funds for unexpend, unforeseen expenditures related to emergencies, so that if we have a hurricane, and we have to spend a chunk of money to do damage replacement, that money doesn't immediately come back to us from the federal government. It can take up to two and a half, three years sometimes for us to get our money back from FEMA. So we need that cushion. So the, the board has a policy in place that you want to strive to have 35% fund balance. You are, based on what we anticipate, you are right there. You'll see that down at the bottom of the page, our June 30, 23 audited unassigned fund balance is $32.4 million. At the end of this fiscal year, we will transfer the 10 million over into a restricted fund, we'll pull it out of fund balance, we'll move it over into a restricted fund that says these funds are only able to be used to match up against the $42 million grant that the county received for a new school. So that'll sit over on the side, so that comes out of fund balance. Then we have an estimated fund balance addition from fiscal year 23, 24. Our current year that we are in, we have anticipated, we're going to put about 3.5 million back into fund balance. And then this upcoming year, you'll have about, you were anticipating $700,000 coming out of fund balance for the two projects. So we anticipate at June thirtieth of twenty-four, what the number will be is twenty-five point two two six million, which is thirty-five point four two percent of revenue to expenditures. So that puts you right at your thirty-five percent fund balance target. It does exceed the eight percent minimum by about nineteen point five million dollars, but we've talked about the reasons for that. And you'll also see there our bond ratings. We have pretty good bond ratings for the size of county we are in ruralish North Carolina. Any questions regarding fund balance?
Brian, that twenty-five million sounds like a lot of money, but it's only four months based on our projected budget.
Yes, yeah, which is why you gotta have funds to be able to, you know.
In the business world, you call that working capital.
Yes, yes. And a lot of folks don't understand, I mean, but money doesn't magically appear. We're not, now, there are some counties in North Carolina who borrow money for operating expenditures. I mean, they, some of the larger counties are borrowing funds. I mean, they've got, they're borrowing money and they're paying it back, but we don't do that. We don't have a, we don't go into hole to borrow money to operate. Which is what you would have to do if you didn't have a fund balance. So any questions on that one?
Good.
Okay. All right, that takes us over to the summary. Let me talk about summary expenditures. Tell you what, I'm gonna skip page twenty-seven, I'm gonna go to page twenty-nine. We'll come back to twenty-seven. Twenty-seven is the roll-up of all the general fund departments and their expenditures, summarizing the percentage change. So we'll come back to that. I'd like to go to page twenty-nine and go through the other governmental funds if you will allow me to. So starting at the top, these are the nine-one-one fund, nine-one-one telephone funds. Those are restricted funds. They can only be used for the nine-one-one system. You'll see our, the revenues and expenditures. That is managed by locally, but it is watchdogged by the nine-one-one board. So we have to, every year, they do an audit on what fund, how those funds are spent, and they have to be used on certain expenditures. And if you use them outside of those expenditures, you have to pay them back. So that's what that is. The seized drug fund, that's the fund where we have seized assets that the sheriff's office uses, seventy thousand there. And we anticipate the revenues and they're to spend expenditures out of that. Fire rescue tax fund, that's where we anticipate, that is the fire rescue taxes that come in and then go back out. EMS tax fund, same thing. Those are the EMS taxes that come into that fund. It is a separate fund outside of the general fund. The tax revaluation fund is the fund where you're required by statute to set aside, if you're doing, if you're doing revaluation traditionally on one, on an eight-year cycle, then you're required by law to set aside what you think the cost of your revaluation will be. You have to set aside one-eighth of that every year into a fund so that it is available for you when you have to spend it. So it's like your kid's college fund. You're setting money aside every year, and by law, you have to do that. And then when you're ready to use it, it's sitting there waiting for you, so you don't have to find it.
The expenditures on that side are just a transfer into a restricted fund?
Right, right. So they come in, you set those aside into that restricted fund. Yep, where the expenditures are, yep.
I mean, we're not really spending the money.
Well, we are right now.
Well, yes, right now we are.
Yep, yep.
But it's a lot bigger than that right now.
Yes, you're spinning against that, right. The economic development fund is the fund, we call that, we call the economic development fund, it's the airport fund. As you recall, years ago, when there was the joint, when the city and the county worked together, we're in, we're joint owners of the airport. And I always laugh about it when I read, when I read the minutes about it where the city said, we wanna get out of the airport business. And then the county said, no, 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 we wanna get out of the airport business. And the county got out of the airport business, even though they asked to get out of the airport business second. So the city ended up with the airport business. And out of that, there was an agreement that was made that read, there's a base value out there. Because part of that agreement was this area gets de-annexed. So the city de-annexed the airport proper, and that was for an economic development piece. So that if you have an airplane, which are typically fairly expensive, you don't get charged city and county taxes, you just get charged county taxes. So there was an agreement that was made that read, the county has a base level of what the valuation is out there as of this date, how many years ago it was. This is the base value that's out there, and the county will always get that amount. Anything above that amount goes to the city, which only makes sense. Why would you not have an agreement like that? Because you get the advantage of working hard and getting investment to go out there and getting folks to locate. If you didn't get revenue off that, why would you do it? So that, this money is what we pay back to the city for the increased value that's been established at the airport. We call it the economic development fund or the airport fund. Capital reserve fund is funds that we put aside for capital projects. The aging fund, the HCC, home community care block grant, that's funding that comes in from the state. Excuse me, there's restricted healthcare reserve fund. Those are the fund, if you remember, we had the hospital fund, the hospital, we dissolved that, put money aside, and you borrowed money against that. That's the hospital reserve fund. The facility and capital reserve, that's where this board voted several, a couple of years ago to take one penny and set it aside. That's where those revenues are going, so we're anticipating six hundred and forty thousand dollars is the penny. Page thirty, EMS special revenue fund, two point two million dollars. That's the Medicaid, Medicare, insurance, that's all the billing that comes out. The other one is tax. This is the billing that comes out of it. And then the rest of these, 4-H special revenue fund, cooperative extension special revenue fund, and DSS representative payee fund. So the two that are similar are the special revenue fund for 4-H and the cooperative extension 4-H. They, as your board probably remembers that, a couple of years ago, the auditing, the GFOA said, you can't have funds the way y'all are doing them across, the standards changed because 4-H used to have a checking account. They essentially had a checking account that they had stuff that would come in for 4-H when they would do things. And GFOA said, you can't do that, you gotta bring that in and show it as a fund for us. So that is now sits in our house. And same thing with the cooperative extension room, special revenue fund. The DSS representative payee special revenue fund, that is where if you've ever, if you've ever looked after a parent's social security for them and you are the representative payee where you are in charge of that person's finances, so the money from their social security check came to you, you are responsible for making sure that it was paid out appropriately to look after that person. That is what we do quite often at DSS where they have, where they are designated as the representative payee for folks, for elderly folks who may not be able to manage those. So that's what that fund is all about. So any questions on?
Brian, go back to page twenty-nine.
Yes, sir.
On the fire and rescue tax. That increase, is that the one percent we project for the northside fire tax?
It is, yes, sir, that's included in that, yes, sir. And I appreciate you saying that because we did, we went ahead and included that in the recommended budget. So yes, sir, it does. Thank you for.
Thanks.
Yes, sir, thank you for reminding me of that. So any questions there? If not, we can go back to, we can go back to page twenty-seven. This is your fold-out page. This is the roll-up summary of all the general fund departments. And we can go through those. Starting on page thirty-one, you see the governmental org chart. And then starting on page thirty-three, you see the detail. And we always kinda go over this one because it's, it's all of our, all of our departments are listed like this in the book where we give the title of what the department is, what it's about, who the, what the contact information is on that. Like for the board of commissioners, you have little information about the board. You have the members, and then we talk about the breakdown of the roll-up. So yeah, we break things down by personnel, benefits, operating, and capital. And that all rolls together to give you a total on the first page. So that's the roll-up specifically here on the board of commissioners on page thirty-three. If you look at page thirty-four, you'll see the individual budget line items for that department. So he goes through salaries, he goes through FICA, hospitalization, Medicaid, all the way down to professional services, office supplies, contract services, dues and subscriptions. Every piece in there, we have a different line item. You will see twenty-twenty-one actuals, twenty-twenty-two actuals, twenty-twenty-three actuals. Then you will see current year as of two-six, twenty-four. You'll see the twenty-twenty-four original budget. You'll see any revisions, the next column is any revisions that have been made so far to the twenty-twenty-four budget. You'll see what we project is going to be expended out of the twenty-twenty-four budget. You'll see what was requested by the department for the twenty-twenty-five budget. You'll see what was recommended in the recommended budget, what we ended up at after we took that information, went through it, had those discussions individually with department heads. And you'll see, sometimes those line items went down, sometimes they went up, sometimes they stayed the same. But in general, that's the detail. So you have, and that applies to anybody. Anybody who picks up our budget book can see to the line item detail of where we are spending money. And that is, that is as small as we get to the line item detail. All that rolls up, like I say, on the first page. So when you go back to the first page, it rolls up. And again, we roll it up by personnel, so we know what the personnel costs are, we know what the benefits are, we know what any operating costs are associated with that department, and then if there are any capital expenditures associated with that department. And then they total up. So we give you twenty-two, twenty-three actuals, we give you the original, we give you amended, the recommended, and you can see the difference. So in this budget, if you look at on the main chart, you can see the total. It's a three point eight percent increase, there's about fifteen point six thousand dollar increase. And three point eight percent increase overall for that department. And if you wanna find the exact detail on what that is, you'll see where the changes come out. So if there are any questions, we can go through, as you go through this, typically, we, what we've done in the past is we've gone through the summary page, and then we've delved down into it as the board wanted to. But I'm happy to do it however you'd like to. We can go page by page, we can go line item by line item. Certainly, I wanna give you as much detail as you want or as little detail as you feel like you need to make an informed decision about where the recommended budget is and what we think it needs to be. So kinda like we did last time?
Why don't we start on thirty-three with the governing board? And just look at the summary at the bottom of the page and see if anyone, any of the commissioners have a question. Then we'll flip over to the details if there is one.
Like I say, you're.
Page thirty-three at the bottom.
So that's about, it's about a three point eight percent increase from last year original. And that's the way we, that's the way we show the percentage change. We look at original to original because we wanna compare apples to apples. So there may have been some changes in the year that occurred that maybe increased that budget or decreased that budget. But we're looking at what was adopted last year as compared to what we're recommending you adopt this year. That's the difference in the percentage. So we're looking at apples to apples.
You wanna go to page thirty-five, county administration?
Yes, sir, happy to do that. So county administration, that's about a four, that's a four point four percent increase. Majority of that is in benefits, and you'll see that overall in all of our departments. There have been, there have been health insurance increases. We're with the state health plan. So there've been some health insurance increases, and there've been some retirement increases related to the state retirement system.
Would you, would you mind saying what that is on the retirement side? I think last year was point eight?
So I don't know it right off the top of my head. I wanna say it's seven, seven point two five, seven point five percent. I can get you those, but there has been a slow increase in that to try to stabilize that retirement fund. I will tell you that I think they're going to be, the North Carolina City County Managers Association has a committee, they have a retirement committee. And I'm a member of that retirement committee. And we meet occasionally with the state treasurer's office to talk about specifically the local government retirement system because there's the local government system, there's the state and teacher system, there's the judicial system. Our concern obviously is the local government system. It is, it is a, over the years, their investment strategy has been very, very conservative, which there's some statutory reasons why it has to be very conservative. But they, but the other piece of that was, they're, what they would do is they would show an actuarial study, and they would look at what their anticipated rate of return was and then what it needed to do to be able to fully fund that or get close to fully funding it. And they had been assuming some rates of returns that were just not realistic. The treasurer came into office and he said, there's a little bit of back and forth about whether it was just him or whether it was the bond rating agencies. I think it was a combination of both. But essentially, the bond rating agency said, we don't care what you decide is gonna be your rate of return, your assumed rate of return. We think, we know what the assumed rate of return is, and we're gonna say this is what the assumed rate of return is. And that's gonna be, then we're gonna look at what you're, how fully funded your fund is based on that. So they got, they brought their assumed rate of return because it's just like gaming the system. I can say I'm gonna get an eight percent return, but I'm not gonna get an eight percent return. I'm more like gonna get a three and a half, four percent return. So they were too high, over the years, they've been way too high. So they brought that down. That was one of the things, that makes a pretty big impact on a big, huge fund. I mean, they're paying out millions and millions of dollars every month in retirement benefits for people who've been in the system for years, both on the state and teacher side and the local government side. So as they made that tweak, as they looked down the line on the actuarial study, they said, well, we're a little bit in trouble. We need to raise the rate of contribution. The contribution rate for the employee, so it's a combination. The employee pays into the retirement system as does the employer. The employee is set at six and a half percent. There you go, thank you, okay. So the employee's rate is set at six and a half percent. That's by statute. The remainder is set, the employer contribution rate is set by the governing board of the retirement system. That's made up of folks that are appointed to that board. And they change that, they adjust that based on what they feel like they need to do to make the system solvent. So that has changed over the years. The argument is the employer contribution is now higher than the employee contribution. And we've had that discussion about when do you think that's gonna change? And what we were clearly told was that probably will not change. The employee contribution will probably not change simply because it is gonna take literally an act of the general assembly to change that. And they probably won't do that. So they, so you got that. And then, so the advancement in the contribution from the employer side was a little bit strong. And we kinda argued, our committee argued with the treasurer pretty strongly about that because their horizon, their window on trying to get the, get the system to a higher funded level. I mean, I think they're funded at ninety-five, ninety-six percent. They're not a hundred percent funded, but they're funded, they're one of the strongest funded ones in the state, in the nation. But he, but their, their plan had a shorter horizon. I mean, they were looking at trying to make this thing more solvent over a seven-year period. Our argument to them was, you didn't get in this situation overnight. You don't have to fix it overnight. So why don't you look at a longer horizon, look at a twenty-year horizon instead of a seven-year horizon? Because any change they make to the system starts on a thirty-year horizon. So anybody who's in the system now is. So anybody who's in the system now is, is governed by the rules that are in place when you came into the system. So any changes they make to the system, whether it be reduction of benefits, changes in those kinds of things, starts with the next employee that gets hired after that change is made. So you're looking at a thirty year horizon. So we, we've argued that with them. We've also done some, our city county manager association has actually hired a, an actuarial firm and an investment firm to look at the, the investment policy that the state has. And, and it, it needs to be more aggressive. It's too conservative and because it is so conservative, it is not performing well as compared to other funds across the state and across the United States. So our hope is that, that obviously the treasurer is, is not going to be the treasurer next year. There'll be a new treasurer in place. And on either side of the aisle, whether it's the, whether the Democrat or whether the Republican wins that race, both of them have talked very strongly about being more aggressive and, and on the investment strategy and doing some things that help stabilize that fund even better. So twenty twenty four, the contribution was twelve point eight eight, twenty twenty five, it'll be thirteen point six three.
Do, do that again, Brian.
Twelve point eight eight to thirteen point six three, so.
Thirteen.
Thirteen point six three, less twelve point eight eight, is a delta of three quarters of a percent. Yeah, and that's general, that's general employees, law enforcement is a little higher because of the law enforcement supplement that comes with that. So there's a, there's a law enforcement rate and there's a general government rate, and that's the general government rate.
Thank you.
So you'll see under county, well, we've been in county administration, a four point four percent increase, about twenty eight thousand dollars. If you want to go into the detail on that, you'll see, yeah, the majority of that is under, is under salaries and, and the benefits.
Finance?
All right, so you'll see finance is at three point two percent, twenty four thousand increase. That is on page thirty seven. Happy to go into any detail on that that you may have.
Here is none, you move to HR.
Yes, sir. So HR is four point four percent, roughly thirteen thousand dollars increase out of a three hundred and twelve thousand dollar budget, three employees. Generally operating is, in fact, operating on theirs is down, this is the benefits and, and personnel costs are up a little bit. And of course, this, you got to remember too, we, we baked, we baked into these numbers a three point five percent, a three point five percent COLA. So that's why you'll see those numbers on the, on the salary side of it.
We're good?
So tax assessor, two point nine percent, forty two thousand on the one point four million dollar budget. You'll see that they're operating as flat, essentially I mean, it's a thousand dollar difference. But benefits is up and salary is the, includes the three point five.
Here is none, we've got a tax collector.
Okay, so the collector is, collector's office is, is up two and, two and a half, about seventeen thousand, seventeen point five thousand dollars on a seven hundred and ninety thousand dollar budget. On this one, you'll see the, the operating expenses are down about about eight thousand dollars. Personnel benefits are up, but right in line with what we, what we anticipated.
You want to get to court facilities?
Court facilities are down slightly, that's less than a, that's a half percent down, eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars down. This is the, these are the operating costs that we share with, in providing court facilities work. You'll see on page, the detail of that on page forty six. There's money in there for the jury commission, there's money in there for courthouse operations, that's the twelve thousand five hundred dollars that was negotiated several years ago with the clerk of court for, for the clerk to take care of minor maintenance issues that they have over there and for furniture and fixture needs. And, and they work with the, with the court personnel to, to do what they need on that. And then the rest of it is utilities and maintenance repair of the courthouse. Now we received some of those funds back and we talked about from state on, on court, court costs that we get back. And then we have contract services, that is the allied universal contract for courthouse security. That's the last item under contract services on page forty six. So that, all that rolls up, there's a, there's a little bit of difference in, I believe it's in, utilities have, have come down just a little bit, but, but not tremendously. So that's where that slight decrease is.
Board of elections?
So board of elections is up eight point three percent, about thirty six thousand dollars. This is up because we'll be in a presidential election year. And so the costs increased there. As you recall, we were, prior year we were in a municipal election where we got reimbursement for the municipal elections. But this is up about thirty six thousand dollars on a four hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget.
Any questions? All right, registered deeds?
So registered deeds office is fairly flat at one point three percent, right at six thousand fifty nine hundred dollars on a four hundred and seventy nine thousand dollar budget. Her operating budget is down from one thirty eight to one twenty five, so making some great, some great strides there. Personnel benefits obviously are up a little bit, but it balances out to just less than six thousand dollars on that almost half million dollar budget.
Facilities maintenance?
So on page fifty one, facilities and maintenance, one point four percent, twenty two thousand dollars up on a one point five, one point five million dollar budget. Some capital costs associated in that, they're flat. Operating expenses are generally flat and then the personnel benefits are up just a little bit, that's mostly where that comes from. Well, this is, this is the, the group that looks after all the facilities. I think Christina has a service expansion there for some additional. We're not showing any recommended additional personnel, but she does have one, a request in there for, for an additional personnel based on, based on square footage, there's some comparisons that are in there that I think the board has seen before on how we are able to look after our facilities.
You want to do the, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So next, page fifty three is debt service.
What, what?
Whoops, sorry.
I think John, do you have a question, John?
Did we want to get in at this point to the discussion of the, the capital projects?
We'll do that, we'll actually do that the, our next meeting.
Okay.
Because that's one of our, under capital projects, that's just about the last thing we'll do next meeting is, is capital, yes, sir.
Now do the debt service summary.
Yes, sir. So on page fifty three is the debt service, it's down, it's down fifty seven thousand dollars, two point two percent. That's because we're paying off debt and it's going away. You'll see our principal, what we're paying on, on page fifty three, you'll see our debt categories, the community college, allied health building, what our principal is being paid, estimated to be paid this year, or we know our principal is going to be paid, our interest rate, the energy saving contract that the board did several years ago, the third street building purchase, that's the Francisco building, we call it, the, the attorney's office, and then, I'm sorry.
Call it the Johnston building.
Okay. The, and then you have the GO bonds, where we refunded those, twenty twenty one, we refunded the general obligation bonds for schools. We did two of those where we were able to get some really incredible refinancing rates. And then the seventeen, eighteen capital improvement financing. So those are all your, that's all your principal and your interest. If you flip over to the next page on fifty four, you'll see those same, that same outstanding debt, what it is. We have a description about what kind of debt it is, whether it's general obligation debt. General obligation or GO debt is debt that is backed by the full faith and credit of the county, which simply means that you pled your taxing authority for that bond. And you say that if you have to, you will raise taxes to pay off that bond. Then we have installment purchased, what we call one sixty A financing, and it's essentially lease purchase. You, you buy a piece of equipment or you, you buy something and you tell the bank, I'm giving you the collateral of that piece of equipment or that building is your collateral. And it's a, it is a, we get, we get really good rates on that. Anything over fifty nine months has to go to LGC for approval. We get shorter notes on that than GO bonds and it is a whole lot cheaper, a whole lot cheaper for us to do that than to do general obligation bonds. Because when you do a GO bond, you got to go out for voter referendum and it just, it's, it's difficult. So you'll see those, you'll see the balances that we have. And so if you look at, pretty impressive, if you look at our current balance as of six thirty twenty four, nine point eight million dollars in one, two, three, four years and twenty eight, we'll be at one point two million dollars. So you see that debt stepping down tremendously. And that's just from, that's just from good, good financial planning and, and refinancing opportunities that we were, that we were able to take advantage of. Page fifty five, you'll see the detail on the debt service requirements, the issue date of the bond, when the final payment of bond is or, or the debt instrument, what it is, what the actual fiscal year cost is, what we're budgeting, what the interest rate is. So I mean, if you look at that, we've got a, we refunded some school bonds. And we, when we refunded those, or we, you say refunded, it's refinanced, they call them refunded a bond. We have an interest rate of one point one seven percent on that, on that GO school bond. And then we got another one at one point two three percent. So just, just dirt cheap interest rates on those. So we were very fortunate in, in, in getting those done when we were able to. So on page fifty six, you get the detail on those, which shows the principal and the interest on all of those. And they all roll up and then you have all the details there. So any questions? That continues to step down.
We're good?
One, one of the things that, one of the things the rating agencies look at is what is your, what is your debt load over the next ten years? And of course, our debt load over the next ten years is zero because it's all going to, it's going to zero over the next ten years. Unless the board decides to finance something else. Wouldn't necessarily recommend you finance anything right now, you've got, you know, you have good, you've saved money, you've got money in the bank, you're earning good interest on it, things turn down. I mean, it's about looking at the market and deciding what's, what's the most, what's the best way to do things, so. So non-departmental is down seven point three percent or down seventy two thousand dollars. That's where we have state unemployment insurance that we pay, it's our postage, our co-pays, our health, our health insurance co-pays, the EAP, our insurance and bonds, and we've, we've been able to drive that down. You'll recall on that, we, we, we increased the deductible on our P and L to fifty thousand dollars and we were able to drive that cost down fairly significantly on insurance and bonds. And that's the majority of what that change is to nine thirty, seven twenty two, so it's down seven point three percent.
But that reflects our decision last month.
Last month, yes, sir. We went ahead and when y'all told us that, we put it in the budget and we, we made it happen. So, because those, that doesn't become effective until July one, our, our, our policy renewed July one, so we were able to show that in the upcoming budget. All right, so on page fifty nine, these are the transfers to other funds. These are where we're transferring money out to the revaluation fund, to the economic development fund, capital reserve, special revenue. That's the Beaufort promise, that special revenue Beaufort promise fund. We don't have any in there because you put, you front loaded it all in twenty two, twenty three. Capital facilities, you'll see the six forty, workers' comp reserve, two hundred, and then the transfer for the specific funds for Wright's Creek. But that is down four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And looking at that, that's just, you can see, you can see the differences in the original and where we're recommending.
Okay.
Contingency?
All right, contingency on page sixty one, you'll see that's down by fifty thousand dollars, that's simply because we cut it in half. Last year we, we had it at a hundred thousand dollars. It's like I told chairman earlier, this budget was a little bit tighter, this budget got a little tighter on us. And we anticipated that, we knew that, we knew that sales tax had plateaued and we knew that interest rates were going to come down some, or anticipated to come down some. So the budget got a little bit tighter this year and we, we started looking for some things to do that. So this is one of those things, we decreased our contingency. We didn't spend any contingency last year. Twenty two, twenty three, we didn't spend any contingency. So, so we felt comfortable in taking that down to about, to fifty thousand dollars. So, and if you'll see up top, it's not, it's not a place where you can essentially front load money either. There is a, there is a piece of the general statute that says that you can't, you have to restrict contingencies to five percent of all appropriations and all other appropriations in the fund. So I mean, essentially you could put three point seven million dollars based on that number in there, but, but it just doesn't make sense to do that, I mean. But that's the, that's obviously for issues that come up that, that we haven't anticipated or need, need extra help with. So we've been very fortunate in not, being able, not having to do that. Resource services?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so social services is up slightly at four point eight percent by six hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. So that's driven by the, the programs in DSS are driven by the state. We are required to, to do what those program, the, the rules relating those programs are driven by the state. So we essentially have to, have to do what they tell us to do and, and we get in, we get estimates from them on what they, what they believe that the additional costs are going to be. You'll see that down on, on page sixty three, at the la, the very last paragraph, the budget is thirteen point eight million dollars and the county portion of that is five point seven million dollars because we pay a portion of that. About, so it's about forty two percent of the total budget is the county, is the county local share. The rest of it is by billable services and state and federal reimbursement. So forty two percent, if you look at last year's twenty three, twenty four, the local contribution was forty two point eight percent. So we're right where we were on the cost share piece. But increased levels of service.
Has that historically gone down over the last five or six years?
I have to pull it to see, I, I think we generally stay about around the forty, forty one, forty two, forty three percent.
Because, okay, okay.
But the experts are here, they can answer any question you have about DSS and their services. Because it is, it's a, it's a, it's a bit complicated.
But you can say that your, your measures that you, you score yourself against, you've done very well. Obviously there's a problem with foster care, but beyond, beyond that, everything else looks wonderful.
Foster care is a challenge.
Yes, foster care, I mean, our, our budget is up and that is my, our main driver this year is foster care because those rates did increase and when the foster care rates increased, your adoption assistance rates also increased.
Can you tell us what those are, what the rate is?
What the rate is, okay. So right now your standard board rate for foster care for a child aged zero to five is seven hundred and two dollars a month. And that's in a, a family placement. For ages six to twelve, it's seven forty two, thirteen and up is eight ten. Now if you're placing, you know, other facilities.
It's like a private agency.
Like a children's home. Like a children's home society or an agency such as that, those rates are much more. Zero to five is $1,854 a month, six to 12 is $2,013 a month, 13 and up is $2,095 a month. And there are instances where we do sometimes have to pay more than that if we have difficult placements.
Do we have any of those in Beaufort County, those homes?
The private, private?
Well, you said that, I'm not sure what you called.
So we have our, so you know, we have, we can license foster homes here at DSS. So we have, those are called our family foster homes. So we do have multiple of those here in Beaufort County. The other private agencies also license foster homes. So those, there may be some in Beaufort County, but they're through private agencies, and that's what they've opted to do.
Okay, but those end up also being private homes? Or are they group homes?
So the ones that you're looking at, so there's both. So there are some that are in group homes, but there are some that are in private homes, but they're leveled, or it's one that we have sent to a private agency, because we don't have one here.
Okay.
But there are some in Beaufort County that are licensed by somebody other than us.
Is there any progress being made on the conversion of the nursing home in Hyde County to a facility to handle?
They are working.
You're working on it, okay. That would be a real plus, I would think.
It would be.
So with the increase in these rates, do you expect that you're going to be able to attract more people to become foster care?
So that, so those rates haven't increased in a long time. So really, really, those rates are probably, I don't even know that I would say they're where they need to be now, because like I said, those rates have not increased in, I don't know the number of years, but it has been a great number of years that those rates have not increased at all. So really, it may be a little bit of attraction, but I don't know that that's really going to attract people to do it. And I don't know that that's really what attracts people. I think people just want to do it out of goodness of their heart when they decide they want to become a foster parent.
Take special people.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
I'd like John, I'm impressed with the, all the measures, the monthly measures.
So on page 71, it's public health. Again, a department that is, receives a lot of state and federal funding, and a lot of our programs are driven by the state. Of this, we have local funding of $2.6 million and the total proposed budget of 5.2, which is a little over 50%, 50.2% is locally funded, our county-funded dollars, the rest are state, federal. Last year, that number, that percentage number of local funding was 42%. So it's up about 8%, but that was due to COVID funding. There was a tremendous, we talked about it last year and the year before, there was a tremendous amount of state and federal COVID funding that came in, which essentially drove down the county's percent. The whole budget went up tremendously, but there was a whole lot more federal and state funding that came in than the local piece. So that's an artificial number. The 42% is roughly, is fairly an artificial number. I will tell you that I was on a task force two years ago when they were looking at public health, and they asked the group about what the funding percentages were. And I told them we were about 50%, and they were like, wow, that's incredible. You guys are funding your health department at 50%. Most counties don't do that, and they were like, that's really impressive. So, so with these, you have the, you have their cost centers they've laid out for you. It's about a 4.3% increase overall, $216,000 in a $5.2 million budget. Any questions with health?
We're totally out of the jail business.
Oh, we are totally out of the jail business.
In the health?
Yes, sir. Agape is under contract with the sheriff's office to manage that, yes, sir. On page 85, veteran services, that budget's up slightly, 3.4%. All of that being driven, it's a one-person department. So anytime there are any personnel benefit changes, that completely drives that. She went up $100 on her operating expenses. The remainder of that is salary and benefits. So 3.4%, but I'll tell you, Jenny does a great job to be a one-person shop to help veterans. And she gives y'all that report, I think, every month, that shows the amount of money that they help bring into the county for benefits that are paid to veterans, and it is a tremendous amount of money that comes in from the federal government. Aerial mental health transportation is flat, there is no change in that. This is where we have, we're funding Beaufort area transit bats to do transportation. You're funding the B.C. Developmental Center, the EdTap, the EdTap, and NCDOT rule grant, those are funds that come from DOT and the state to, for those specific programs. The CJP Passages is a pass-through. That's where they're providing services under a contract with the state for recidivism services. And the county years ago said, we don't want to be in that, we don't want to do that, we don't want to be in that business, so they contracted it out. Passages does that, so that $50,000 is a reimbursement. It's submitted, and then the state reimburses us, so it's a pass-through, it's a flow-through on that. And so the expenditure side is balanced out on the revenue side with the $50,000. Alcohol treatment is money coming off the bottle tax, and then Trillium is ABC funds that you send over, Trillium for mental health. So that's, there is no change in that, and that's pretty standard over the years.
Brian, does the elderly slash handicap transit, those funds, do they, do they go through bats? Or is that a separate, is that going to some third-party?
So DSS is not in here. So there's part of that, those funds flow, I believe those flow to DSS, and they use those to provide transportation services for clients.
So it'd be a third-party?
Right, they would either be using bats, or they'd be using sometimes taxi services or other services to provide transportation for folks. I think a lot of it's bats.
I'm good.
Okay. So then we move to corporate extension, here under community services now. So corporate extension, they are, and they're at 3%. And you recall, we have an agreement with the state on that, where we fund, we fund a contract for salaries on that, but then we also have some expenses. So slightly, like I say, slightly up $9,000 on a $326,000 budget. So 3%. It's just slightly up on operating. And the five, you'll see where the under personnel, the $5,480, that's the position that the board approved two meetings ago for your summer, two meetings ago for the summer person. That's why, that's why you now see money in personnel, because it's usually not under there, because we have a contract, we've had a contract with the state to offset the others, but that's why that shows in there now. So half of that increase was the boards agreeing to do that.
You want to go to salt and water?
Yes, sir. So salt and water is up 6.9%, but that includes the Beaver Management Program that the board approved, adding in, so there's a $13,000 increase in that budget, but $6,000 of that is the Beaver Management Program. And Ann's here and can answer any of those questions that you may have. I don't know that there really are any, when you think about personnel and benefits have gone up, actually, their operating cost, if you look at their original operating costs of $31,000, and you see the recommended operating cost of $37,000, there's a difference of $6,000, and that's the Beaver Management Program. So the rest of it's personnel benefits. Any other questions? Okay, so youth services on page 99, you fund Pamlico Pals, you fund the Boys and Girls Club, you do your local match for JCPC. And the reason you're down $19,996 or 7.5% is because of some one-time funding that last year that you provided some additional funding to Boys and Girls Club. You'll see the original, the original, the 2223 actual was 40. Last year, you added 20 in one-time expenditures to the Boys and Girls Club, so it went from 40 to 60. Because that was one-time funding, we brought it back down to 40. So that's your, and the JCPC was a little different in the actual amounts for this year. But overall, down almost $20,000.
John?
We're not actually spending $204,000 on JCPC, right?
That's the total amount?
Total, right.
That's the total amount, that's half.
10%.
Correct. Yes, sir. So Boys and Girls Club did ask for, I think they asked for some more money. We got their information behind it, we also have it in the service expansion piece, so we doubled up on that. And then you see the JCPC. So for that detail, you'll see the total on page 113, you'll see 185, 624 is the JCPC state funding, the $18,567 is local county match, so 204,191 is the total. Outside agencies, kind of have to flip over on this one. It's actually down $35,000. And you'll recall how we do this, so on page 116, you'll see the original budget. So take Aurora Recreation, the very top, the third one down that has any numbers on it. Last year's original budget was $5,000. Because that was in there last year, we put it in again this year at $5,000. So the recommended, the requested is five, and the recommended is five. You do have some, like Bath Recreation, where you'll see, you funded them last year $15,000. This year, they requested $115,000, because they've got a capital expenditure they want for putting some lights up. We did not show that amount, we showed the 15 that you did last year, and we pushed the $100,000 over to the service expansion page for you to consider later. So that's why you'll see the request, the recommended may be different than the requested. And that would be the reason for those. It is down a little bit, because there were some one-time allocations last year to Greenlamp and to Citizens on South Side Together, that you did one-time funding. You specifically said this is one-time funding, it does not repeat next year. So that's why that decreases in there. These are generally pretty flat, because anything above what you got last year or anything new gets pushed to a service expansion. So all those are actually in there as well. So you got to thumb a few pages.
Washington Recreation down five, any rhyme or reason to that?
That's what they asked for. They asked for, we gave them $25,000 last year, they asked for 20 this year. So we gave them what they asked for.
On the spreadsheet, you can see the funding, and then you can see the number of players or active people in each one of the programs, and what it amounts to on a per-player basis. And then, of course, you can see Aurora Panting and Washington Park, that to my knowledge, does not have any sports programs. That's more or less just for their playground equipment and other parks, recreation, whatever they do. But, you know, the question comes is, we're not being fair with Washington compared to these other locations. And I, you know, these are the numbers that they provided, the participants. The only thing that I would say is, you know, Washington, and this is number, these numbers are older. The utility gross revenues, several years ago, when Mayor Hodges was still living, were like $11 million. And when I asked how much of that they brought down to the bottom line, it was roughly $1.5 million. So, you know, my contention is, the county people are already subsidizing city services. You know, I don't know what they use the money with on a specific base, but there's plenty of money going in. And our county residents are already on the utilities paying a 5% higher rate. So I'm not really in favor of doing anything. I just did this to see what the numbers look like on a per-individual basis. A lot of comparisons going on, you know, with some of the other cities. But in other locations, you know, the city pays all of the expenses. And the, you know, they don't have a baseball league, a softball league, and a soccer league, and, you know, they pick up the officials and, you know, different charges. So, I mean, we made some improvements last year, and, you know, gave the, took away from the ones that didn't have a sports program and put it with the ones that were pretty active. What's interesting, if you look at some of these, you know, there's people going from Washington down to Bath, and of course, there's people from Panting going to Bath. You know, this, I mean, it's all over the board, all over the board. I think if you want to throw darts at somebody, I think, I think some of these other municipalities need to step up to the plate as it relates to, you know, capital for the lights and that sort of thing. So, yeah, anyway, that's just for your information. Sorry, Brian.
No, no, you're good, Mr. Chairman. So the next department is economic development. It is up 2.1%, every bit of that is essentially personnel benefits. It's $7,336, operating is actually down by $4,000. Questions? On page 237 is the planning and inspections. We call it planning and inspections, mostly inspections. There is the planning piece of it, because the contract that we have with the Mideast Commission for Planning Services is including, is included in that in the operating expenses. But overall, that is 3.3% up, $11,000 on a $370,000 budget. Majority of that, obviously, salary and benefits. Good, okay.
Everybody's good.
So the next one we move on to is the school system, public school system. Superintendents here tonight to get you any details that you may have. They provided some additional information to you this time around. So what we did when we put the budget together, we increased the current expense by 3.6%. We increased the capital by 3.6%. The SRO funding came out, the 66800 came out, I mean, the 603600 came out, because that. six hundred came out because that moved back now to the sheriff's office. So essentially that, that budget is point two percent, essentially flat. So on page two forty-one, uh, you'll see a little different presentation. And I'm sure Superintendent Dr. Cheeseman will talk to you about that, about, uh, how they're looking at positions they had, that they used Esser funding for, and, and how, what they were hoping the county would be able to help provide for them, uh, based on those positions. So, and, and they give you the capital piece as well. But Dr. Cheeseman can do a better job of that than I can.
Good evening.
Nice to see you. Thank you for having me tonight.
Glad to have you.
And on behalf of the Board of Education, I appreciate your time to, you know, think through this with us. So we did, in fact, provide a, a different sheet this year. So it would help really tell the story and understand kind of where we are. And we are very different than many other public school systems right now where so many are looking at what's called the Esser cliff. And what that really means is they have so many positions that were hired during COVID with the intention of closing achievement gaps, of which they still haven't closed out those positions. So you'll see that other public school systems may have ten, thirty, fifty, depending how large the system, a hundred of Esser-funded positions that they're gonna have to figure out what to do. Well, ours is a little bit different. The Board of Education closed their Esser positions, which were two-year, one, or two-time, one-year contracts. So in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and by June of twenty twenty-three, those Esser positions closed out. With the understanding that the state was looking at us, all public school systems, saying that Esser funds had to be depleted and spent out by September of twenty twenty-four. Since then, I think the state has gone back and said January twenty twenty-five. So in short, we consolidated some of those positions, we closed those positions out, but if you look at our spreadsheet that we provided you this year, we're in an if-then scenario. And what you'll see is, in those columns, you'll see thirty-six positions to thirty-four to twenty-nine to zero. And above that, you'll see Esser sitting in parentheses. While in fact, these are not the additional Esser positions, these are site-based positions of our employees that because of our funding versus the debt that has continued to rise since twenty twenty-one, associated with state raises, health benefit costs, whatever it might be, that we ended up with, you know, this forty-five degree angle on the X-Y axis with this gap of funding where, in theory, we started cutting positions three years ago. So because we started doing that, consolidating retirements or, you know, promotions or resignations or whatever it may have been, instead of looking at thirty-six, thirty-four, and twenty-nine, you likely would have looked at seventy, sixty-five, sixty. So the board did a really nice job of just closing the gaps as we were going. So to this, the point I'm making is, we use the additional Esser funds that we had in order to save current positions, to hold tight to them. And we had to do that because state funding has come down in terms of position allotment. Federal funding has come down. And your enrollment is down. And so in short, in twenty oh nine, you had about seventy-four hundred students in the public schools. On this allotment projection, it's about fifty-seven hundred. And all kinds of reasons, school choice opportunities, less kids in the county, uh, multiple agencies in schools that people can choose from. But to that, it doesn't change the dynamic of your district has a river right in the middle of it, so you have all these different communities that want a school there. And so in short, we have a little bit of a struggle and a decision that we have to make. So right now, we have five positions sitting in our local account. Forty-one other positions sitting in Esser money that are not the Esser-funded positions as I've described. The difference of that is where the thirty-six comes from. And so what we're hoping to do, and what the board is asking me to relay to you, is in an if-then model, if you're able to fund us at the amount to hold those thirty-six positions, then in fact, you're looking at that first column. If in fact, you can't fund that, well, if you start decreasing down, this is the amount of positions I can hold. After those twenty-nine positions, we went to zero, meaning in short, we would essentially try to use our own fund balance to save whatever we could save. So we had to just kind of draw the line at that eighty percent. Could we go differently and think otherwise? Obviously, we could all brainstorm in that regard. So the board has about a million dollars in its fund balance, which is what it was when I first got here in twenty nineteen. So the board has done a very nice job of holding that money, plus or minus a couple hundred thousand, give and take based off of whatever the needs are at the time. But if you notice, this year specifically on the left-hand side of this funding request, this is all based on need, this is not a wish. And in those needs, you'll see the state mandates of a four percent raise, somewhere in that ballpark, we're thinking, although the governor came back most recently and said, hey, we love an eight point five percent raise. And I, I'm thrilled if that were to be happening for all of our employees, well-deserved in public school education. However, I would also have to come back and say, help me more, right? But if you look down, the salary increases, the FICA increases, the retirement rate, we're thinking of staying around twenty-five point, point zero-two percent. Which, for others listening to this, when I first got into the business as being a superintendent, I was looking at like sixteen point eight when I first started many, many years ago. So that continues to creep up. You'll see the health insurance. So these are things that we do not control. And as an entity of a public school system, we do not generate our own cash flow. And we recognize that as county commissioners, state is making decisions and then we look at you to help us fill those gaps. And so we understand how challenging that can be for you when others may be making decisions that are actually very beneficial to our employees, but we need help with the gap insurance. If you look at the utility increase, this is Duke Energy projecting a twelve percent increase in our utilities. That would be most of our schools and most of our campuses, minus maybe two. HRMS state mandated software change, so this is to hold us tight at twenty-two thousand so we can continue to use our human resource service until the state requires us for a guaranteed shift. And then, of course, property insurance, we received notice just before this process started that we would have a thirteen percent increase. So none of this is a wish list. It's actually, um, maybe some unintended consequences of just the reality of where we are in the world right now. Uh, but we do not generate our own income. So that is why I'm asking for you to consider such a significant change. And we recognize that this is a significant increase request. And down bottom on the left-hand side, you may see what our county appropriation has been over the last four years. And so we are thankful for that, but please also be mindful in the county appropriation of fiscal year twenty-four at fifteen point five, even if I look at zero positions in terms of being saved at sixteen point zero five five, that would be probably another seven positions I would have to cut down, getting me to almost forty-three positions. So what does that look like, sound like, and feel like? Well, many people don't realize that we are already at a skeletal situation. So I have one person at the district office and a student services division. I have three people in the district office in terms of curriculum and instruction, still servicing, you know, fifty-seven hundred students, teachers, principals. Uh, we're down a couple mechanic positions, we're down a maintenance position, some clerical positions. So where do these cuts actually happen? So they're gonna be at the school this time. And that's what's scary as a superintendent is, these would be classified staff, clerical staff, obviously, we want to do nothing that touches a classroom, but we're now at that point where it's gonna touch a classroom. And it's gonna touch every single building, every single school. You're in that position of thirty-six to forty-three. So what does that look like? It doesn't necessarily mean someone loses a job. That's not what we're trying to do. It does mean that we start positional shifts. And when that happens, class size law of K-three, fantastic for the young kids, fantastic for the teachers of young kids, fantastic for the community of young kids in grades K-through-three, which means I cannot go above seventeen, sixteen, eighteen, eighteen without, you know, a standard waiver of plus-three. So in short, I could probably stretch it to twenty-one in a classroom. But beyond that, the state has no cap on grades four through twelve. CTE has caps, usually around sixteen, sometimes twenty. But to the point is, you will start to see, in order to really consolidate, change, squeeze together, class sizes that some schools were very accustomed of eighteen will stretch to twenty-five. If you're at twenty-five, probably stretch to thirty-two. If you're at twenty-eight, you're probably gonna stretch to about thirty-five or thirty-six. And that has nothing to do with, uh, you know, the quality of the education inside the classroom in terms of where we are now, but it will have everything to do with the quality of education inside the classroom when you start to see that stretch. And so our concern about that is, if every single school is starting to feel that impact and your school numbers are rising inside those classrooms, well, it's gonna take far more intentionality around working with students in terms of where they are academically, far more to support our teachers in that regard. And so in that support, your district office team, their sole job is to support our schools. They don't evaluate people, they don't evaluate instruction in that regard, it's to support the schools. And so over the last three years, we have taken people from the district team, put them back into teaching positions to try to maintain their employment, but also try not to lose teachers. Ultimately, that some of those people have left and gone on to greater jobs. So as positions have opened, we've tried to close in places. But now we're looking at every single school would be impacted, every single campus would be impacted. And so we're asking your thoughtfulness of how we can help with this. And so again, the board does have a fund balance around a million dollars currently, waiting to close out for the year, so it might be a little bit more or a little bit less. And we're trying to be thoughtful around our expenditures, meaning in that conservative approach, not spend just to spend, but make sure that whatever we're spending on is a high-value need with a potential high-value return on it. Uh, but now we're in that circumstance where, because we are geographically spread out, I cannot just simply switch teachers from one building to the other right on the same campus. And when you do switch your teachers, people get upset. And, but we need to actually cover other places. So you'll see shifts, you'll see movements, and you'll see larger class sizes. So that's why we're trying to break this down to show you, okay, what does that look like? And so in short, thirty-six positions, majority are school-based positions, not all. So we would cut down at the district office as thin as I could cut it again. Those individuals would likely go back into schools in different positions, um, to the best of our ability. And then a lot of this would just be increased class size to hold them. Now, why is this a challenge for us? Well, most people don't understand, or just don't know because they're not in the business of education, that the state of North Carolina funds your teaching positions through what's called an allocation number. And so that allocation number is a teaching position. So Commissioner Revoltz, if you were a teacher of thirty years and you're making sixty-three thousand dollars, I can put that into a state position, they'll pay for it. Mr. Waters, if you're a brand-new teacher, I could still put that in the state and they would pay for it. The salary doesn't matter, it's a position. Where it does matter is that the state controls the budget. So we receive budget changes often, and I'm already on my fifty-eighth budget resolution for the year, of which they either give you or they take from you. And the state tries to balance that from the east coast to the west coast, or to the west side of the actual state. And so you don't know these are coming. So the projection that we just received at the end of last week, which the board will look at this coming Tuesday night, is that the state projects that we lose an additional four point five seven positions for next year. That's on top of what I've just handed you. And that's all based on numbers. So to explain to people who may be listening, the state of North Carolina looks at the total number of students in Beaufort County in any public school, and they fund it based on total positions of the total number of kids, regardless of what school they're in. So that two hundred and fifty-seven positions or two hundred and sixty-one positions lands into the central office and then the Board of Education and myself and others disseminate those position allotments to the schools. The schools do not get them directly. So the state doesn't fund like Snowden directly, or Bath directly, or Eastern directly. It all comes into one pot. Now, we always staff K-through-three first because that's the law, class-sized law. And then you move from there. And when you run out of those positions, then you have to look at what your federal government guidelines allow you to do with that money. And when you run out of that, then you look at local. And so for our local this year, currently, as I said, I have forty-one positions being saved by Esser funding that we had accumulated because we were thoughtful to hold that money. That money is going to be depleted, and that's why I'm sitting at thirty-six positions right now. And so our goal is to make sure that all schools that currently are in operation in all of our communities are maintained. Uh, no community wants to lose a school. And that's not what the board is even looking at right now, they certainly aren't. But what I can say is, we have found ourselves in this position where because we are well-spread out in the topography of Beaufort County, that this is becoming increasingly more challenging. And so there you go. Questions?
Questions? Randy?
In the classrooms that get, uh, increasing enrollment?
Yes, sir.
Will you have, will they get first dibs on teacher's assistance?
No, sir. And the reason being is, your teacher assistance, and I'm just gonna look at my notes real quick so I don't steer you wrong, a majority of your teacher assistants are elementary, right? State of North Carolina looks at a funding mechanism or ratio mechanism that essentially says, let's look at kindergarten and maybe first grade. As a matter of fact, most of the funding mechanisms for first grade and beyond really don't exist as much anymore, unless you have any local funds drive that. So in short, when you're looking at grades four and above, no, you would not see a large amount of teacher assistance there because they're locally funded in, in many cases. You would definitely see that support in your exceptional children's division, obviously, it's gotta be there. You may see that in a place where if I can't find a licensed teacher, I might have a teacher supporting a facilitator to actually run an online class in order to make sure the child still has some type of education in that regard. But part of the shutdown and consolidation piece of that is taking those vacant TA positions and closing them in a cost-saving way. But we're trying not to impact the elementary schools with your teacher assistance. So although they're very essential for what we need, I don't see being able to staff teacher assistants into larger class sizes because the position allotment would not hold it.
I've heard it doesn't work, but I certainly had it at East Carolina where, you know, we had a lot of video professors.
Yeah.
And, um, but I, I think you do a little bit of that now?
We do. Let me just be very clear on this. As a former high school teacher of chemistry and forensic science for fourteen years, uh, but also being a parent of a child, there is nothing greater than having the educator live, present in the room. There is no software package that's gonna educate a child better than a teacher. Just nothing to that, I think we're all in agreement in that. Where we've been forced in this is that your pipelines of professional educators in the state of North Carolina, but also nationally, uh, fewer people are going into this profession. And when the state ranks in the bottom five or sorts of, you know, average teacher salaries, that kind of sends a message to young people and older people of, is this the career I wanna be in? So that alone in the state is a dilemma for us. So to that, we've had to look at very significant issues where we may have lacking math teachers, we might lack science teachers. So we have had to put students onto online opportunities with a facilitator. We have actually looked at, um, collaborating with other districts potentially for next year, where you have distance learning, where I can cite an example of Clinton City Schools in Sanson County, partnered with Edenton Schools in Chauvin County. And the math teacher in Clinton City taught her students and taught visually to the students in Edenton at the same time, and one paid the other. And she actually traveled multiple times, go up and down the highway to meet with the students and reverse teach. But that's an extreme moment when you just cannot find people. In the moment, I'm excited to say we're starting to find more math, math teachers for next year. But we have had to go to online learning in certain circumstances, using edgenuity and using other facilitators, face-to-face, online, one-to-one, whatever it might be, to try to be supportive, but nothing will ever replace the quality educator in front of the child, nothing.
John?
Just so I understand.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with this.
All right.
Under the save a hundred percent.
Yep.
Those thirty-six people... Those 36 people are currently in the school?
Positions, so majority of them are in the school, some of them...
Well, I meant they're in the school district.
In the district, yeah. They're real people.
They're people.
They're people. Positions, but they're people in positions.
But they're now, the state's saying, you don't need them?
No, no, no.
Okay.
What's happening is your funding source is depleted.
Right, the ESER funds, which was an inflated source of funding during a pandemic.
Yeah, so the best way to say it is, the Board of Education did such a great job of holding money off to the side that this dilemma that should have popped up on you in 2021 is actually now popping up.
Okay, okay.
Whereas in that ESER funding, we also used $5 million of ESER funding to do all of our HVAC. So they were very intentional of saying, my goodness, we can't cut people in positions in 2021, 2022. So they used that ESER money to save current positions. So that's where we are now. I no longer have that funding stream. I'm not getting it from the state, I'm not getting it from the federal government, and I cannot generate my own cash flow, so I'm now looking at you.
Okay.
That's the concern, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So you've got a situation that at some point in time, all districts faced, right? They ran out of ESER funds for the additional teacher staff that they put in place.
Yes, so that's the ESER cliff where the additional people they hired might still be on their roster, and now they don't know what to do with them, where that's not our case. The additional people we hired concluded their employment contracts in June of 2023.
And then you transferred, using that money?
The remaining ESER money, they opted not to hire those people for another year to save these positions.
Save these people.
Yes.
Okay.
Very thoughtful on their part.
So, so you've maintained positions? I'm just trying to understand all this.
Yeah, go ahead.
You've maintained positions while enrollment has gone down?
Using funds that you not, would have not normally had.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And had I not had those funds, I would have cut them three years ago.
Okay.
Yeah. And so you're in, in a weird way to say it, you were in a really good place that the federal funds and ESER money has dropped, and giving you local control over how you could use that. So the board said, you know what, we're going to save these right now and hold these. So that, so they put that money aside and said, this is what we're going to do. And that's what's paying them right now. So of the 41 people that I have sitting in ESER, they would have been sitting in local if I didn't have ESER.
Or they wouldn't have been sitting at all, right?
Correct.
When you spent ESER money on HVAC, isn't that our job? I mean, don't we keep up with the capital?
Yes, sir, it is. However, it is your job, however. I think the Board of Education has a really great relationship with the county commissioners, and I'd never want to step in the way of that. So I think the Board of Education essentially said, you know, thank you, thank you for your thoughtfulness, we're going to do this now with the hopes that you'll help us later. But here's the key, and just being very forward with you, I would not have been able to carry $5 million forward. I would not, I can't do that. And so in short, we looked at our community schools and said, this is a need right now. We're spending all this money on these repairs, do it now. And so yes, could I have saved some other things, maybe used that $5 million for other items in the district and then pulled that money off to the side? Probably not to the tune of $5 million, but I, I mean, there are a lot of smart people in this room and the rooms I work in, and I feel very blessed that someone could have helped us.
If you wouldn't have fixed this problem?
No.
This clip still would have been there?
This circumstance, yes, would have been here. And to be really forward with you, let's say we never went to COVID, but your enrollment still went down because of less children in the county, and the federal government dropped it because of less kids. Then you would have had this issue staring straight at you in 2021 with about 60 positions, not 35 or 36. Yeah. And so your board at the time, the first time I went to the board in 2021 and said, please look at 16 positions and let's start cutting this down, they said, we do not want to impact the classroom, let's cut eight. That's where it started.
Okay.
And then all of a sudden, everything just started to keep going, now the state dropping it, the enrollment started moving to different places, federal government started dropping it with their Title I funding, that's the funding I'm talking about dropping. And so through that, the board said, you know what, put money off to the side, if we're allowed to use the ESER funds, then we're going to hold it. And now here we are.
The state funding drop?
Your fault.
Because of enrollment?
Typically, what happens is the state looks at it because of enrollment numbers, so they count all the students in one district, not in one location.
Right.
So yes, it drops. And how that impacts you, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, how that impacts you as an example? If you have a teacher, say, you know, at School X, and that teacher is supposed to be teaching 20 students, well, across the hall, someone's teaching CTE, and they can only be capped at 16. Well, CTE funding comes from a different place, it doesn't impact that 20. Well, now up the hall, I might have 21. Well, I might get an extra student now, say, in first grade, first grade class, and the state law says, hmm, after 21, you've got to have a second teacher. So suddenly I have to find a second teacher, use local money to fill that gap. So as the state numbers are dropping, it's based on teacher positions, but inside the classroom, you may not have lost all the kids in that classroom, you may have lost some. And so even though each school might be losing some, the totality of positions is being cut at the center core, which is the district. So in short, Commissioner, great example, Snowden, if you have 17 kindergarten kids, you're good. I can waiver three, right? Let's say I get to 20. If I get a 21st child who walks in the door in October, I have to hire a teacher. So then you split those classes into, say, 10 and 11. And someone walks down the hall and says, man, this is really up there.
Yeah.
But I have to hire that teacher from your local budget, of which you've already approved my local budget five months before, and none of us knew this was going to happen. Those are the things that happen to us. It's very strange that if you get your paycheck and then someone else walks in and says, we're going to take about 10% of that right now, thank you, and you have zero control over it. Those are things that public schools experience. Now, there are times where they drop some money to us, and those are typically for individual programs, not necessarily teacher levels.
You good?
It's depressing.
Sir, it is. No, it really is, and I appreciate you saying that, but when the state of North Carolina starts to look at teacher pay and teacher funding and how to get people into the industry, then you're going to have a greater resurgence back into it. Absolutely.
Yeah.
I feel for our educators.
What is, the enrollment statewide, has that declined?
In public schools?
Yes.
Yes.
Has it?
Yes.
Because I know Wake is still growing.
Well, statewide, yes, but I also need you to understand that, you know, your General Assembly just recently approved school opportunity, so voucher system. And if you recently saw the next six years of the amount of money going into that to sustain that opportunity, so the 72,000 student applications that were in limbo, they just passed a multimillion-dollar opportunity in order to make sure that every one of those kids gets to go where they want to go. Well, then, in 2031, the state has allocated $800 million to make sure that kids get to go wherever their families want them to go. And that's fine under school choice, but you're not getting the same amount of money support in consideration of public schools, especially in rural North Carolina. And so it is depressing in that regard. You're seeing separation, and we don't think we'll see a lot of it in Beaufort, but you'll see some. But you're not receiving the same type of intentional funding of public schools the way other opportunities are funded. And we would love your support at the state level for that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So real quick, while Dr. Jeeves was here, I pulled up the email, and thank you for sending that, it was back in April. You had a question, Mr. Chairman, about number of locally paid positions. So I pulled that email up and did some quick math. It's 82 locally paid positions as of 4/25/23. That may have changed since then. So the breakdown of that was one warehouse manager, nine assistant principals, 15 office support, 12 maintenance staff, six custodians, 19 certified teachers, five technical, technology assistants, two personal care assistants, four teacher assistants, and nine administrative slash directors.
That's a mouthful.
There's 82 positions.
As of 4/25, and I can resend that email to y'all, but as of 4/25, I guess that's still fairly close, 82. And I sent an email to Dr. Luke to ask him to send me the same.
Do you remember the days when that data was impossible to get from the schools and just like that, it's here?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Always appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anytime.
One last question I was...
Yes, sir.
We, the, the original application for the school, the new school?
Yes, sir.
Okay, had us spending a million dollars of the 10 this year, 23, 24?
Allocating a million, yes, just...
Well, okay, we're not going to, at what point do you think we're going to start spending money?
Great question. So the Board of Education on Tuesday night will see a design plan that, with hope, they give you the green light for Mr. Height to continue moving forward. We have been very thoughtful as to not spend anything until we really see the type of movement that we need to see. So right now, you're still in the design scheme phase.
Right.
I don't think that you'll actually start really having to assemble the budget in totality for any type of expenditures until the summertime or the fall. Because what most is happening right now is your survey was finished, your Department of Transportation is doing a traffic study right now. So that's a lot of work between Eastern and John Cotton Taylor and the back property of Eastern to see. You've got your design scheme coming together. And so ultimately, I would see us starting to look at potential expenditures probably this summertime. I would hope after July 1, put it in the next fiscal year.
Okay, okay.
And the interesting part about that, and I'm not sure everyone's aware, is the way it was put together by your General Assembly is that your $42 million grant and your $10 million match is that we have to fill out documentation, and this is why we're going to have to be so close, is that anytime that we do have an expenditure, we have to show the weighted values of that in terms of how each piece of funding went into that. So if I receive a surveyor bill, I just can't suddenly write a check and it comes right out of your money or the state's grant money, there has to be a weight to that. So there's forms and all of that kind of things that, you know, your county manager and I are going to sit down and look at, okay, how did these things work? And we have people at the state helping us with that.
With SROs moving to the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah.
Was there many grants that you participated in for SROs? And will you continue to write them even though the money's not going to you?
Okay, so just so you understand, we actually apply to, and it's usually every two years, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's two years, which is a state-level grant for SRO support. And this year was $396,000 that automatically comes to you. And so I think in that $603,000 a year, or $608,000 a year, about 396 come from the grant that we applied to. Never guaranteed, but it's usually a two-year deal. And on the back end of that, we'll continue to write those. And, and for that money, the board can use that money either for safety and security things of its own, if you ever decided to fully fund it on your side, we could use that money for safety and security. But if not, they'll put it back towards the SROs. Now, in addition, off to the side, we're currently looking at a COPS grant, C-O-P-S grant, that looks at the acquisition of monies up to $500,000 with a 25% match for safety and security items, but you can't use that on people or positions. So we're starting to write that grant now, and we'll take it back to the board for their consideration shortly. Always, always trying to look for other monies, that's the key piece in any way.
And we, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
Absolutely. Last thing, you're always welcome to come through our schools at any given time, just stop at the main office, check in and go give it a look, and if you'd like myself or some other to give you a tour, we'd love to do it for you. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Matthew?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You want to go to the college next?
Yes, sir. So the Beaufort County Community College is the next one. They're up 717,678, or about 21%. Of course, you got to back out the $500,000 in one-time funding for the trade building that you approved. So if you actually back that out, it's only 6.4% increase. They do have an increase, if you look on page 251, if you back out the 500 out of the 819.5, they're, that's 319.5, so they're up a little bit on capital, and then up about 200 or so, a little less than 200 on their current expense. That's where that one shakes out. So you've essentially fully funded their request, plus added the additional 500 for the trades building, that they're going to use state grant funding, state construction grant funding to match up against as well.
So we're saying they're up 6% in, in continuation?
Well, no, no, 6% overall, 6.4% overall. So if you back out, you back out the $500,000 out of the 819.5 and take the total of both, then it's up about 6.4%.
Okay. But the rest of the budget's only up 3.8?
The rest of the budget?
The county budget.
True, correct.
Okay.
Well, overall, 3.9.
Okay.
It's very obvious, we're up 3.9, so. So yeah, every year, so I guess to that point, every year, we, we help fund other folks and we cut ourselves.
Okay. Well, they're saying they've got a 4.5% increase in COLA. We're saying 3.5.
Who, where?
On page 254.
You're talking Community College?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what they're showing.
Okay. So why are they giving a full percentage more than we are?
That's their, that's what they put in there.
Okay. So I think that needs to change.
When you're starting to do that, we're happy to run those numbers for you.
Okay.
If that's something...
I mean, I don't think that we can be showing that, for the college in the schools district isn't, schools district is getting, unless it comes from state.
Well, there's, they are just like the schools, we'd have to look at that number. They're, they're like the schools in that they're asking you to pay the COLA, a matching COLA for their certify, for their locally funded positions. So, so if you go back, all right, so on that, on that line, if you go back to the public school system, and you look at the current expense that we're proposing to fund under our budget, we're proposing to fund current expense of 16.139 million for current expense in the public school system. If you go to the last column where we're saying we're not able to pick up all the ESER positions?
Right.
We're saying none, they're requesting 16.055 million, which would include the 4% increase state mandate raises. So if you fund, so we're, we're fully funding that one as well, so.
So the state's get mandating four on the schools?
Well, we don't really know. I mean, they're saying four, the governor said eight and a half. It all depends on what the General Assembly says, because they're the only ones who have the, I mean, they're the ones who are going to write the budget because they throw the governor's budget out. So to that extent, we fully funded the 4% under this for the schools, although we're not picking up any of their ESER positions, simply because when we had the conversation, they said, nobody's going home. They may be working in different positions, but they're not going home.
Right.
So, so in that, in that case, they're equal. So if we were to say, pull out of this and pull out of the other as well.
Okay.
Yeah, on the backside, they've got the 8.5% raise, but, you know, here again, I've said this before and I'll say it again, is that I'm not in favor of paying anybody at the college or the school system with county money, giving them a higher raise than I do county employees. them a higher raise than I do county employees. So, if we got 3.5%, if that's what we're, we're saying's in the budget for our county employees, then, you know, that's, that's what we're increasing for those positions.
Problem is, you got a state mandated increase.
Yes, yes. And they don't call us to let us know that it's gonna impact our budget, but... Brian, do you have any, anything parting, any parting remarks before we reconvene on Tuesday?
No, sir. We'll get you the information from the Community College about the locally-funded positions. I'll resend that email just so you have it in the spreadsheet form, so you can look at it. If you didn't have the opportunity, quickly write it down. And if there's anything, you know, you've had a couple days now, well, you've had, I doubt you did much looking at it Monday night, but, but you've had Tuesday and Wednesday to, I'm sure you dedicated lots of time the last couple days to seriously study in the book. So if you have any questions that came, that just came up, that you need, that you like answers for, that we can get to you ahead of time before we get into that section, then please let us know so we can, so we won't slow you down, we don't wanna slow you down on anything, so...
Okay. If nobody has any, anything else, we will reconvene next Tuesday night at 5:00 p.m. Good evening.